Good evening. It's 7 o'clock, it's December 7th, and this is the regularly scheduled Board meeting of the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Education. It's good to see all of you folks here tonight. Your presence here indicates your interest in public education, and for that, we're thankful. Moving right along to item, I believe it's 179, am I correct? 179.16, Pledge of Allegiance. We have two guests, Bell and Eli Espinoza.
(Singing) For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with Eli. Eli is a first-grade student at Graham Elementary School. His teacher, Mrs. Taylor, shares that Eli is a wonderful student. He is hard worker, kind to others, and extremely polite and helpful in the classroom. He enjoys football and is always eager to talk sports and share his stories. Our other pledge person for today is Bell, and she is a third grader at Graham Elementary School. Her teacher, Mrs. Gutt, has shared that Bell is a responsible and respectful leader in her classroom. She is a cheerful girl, which allows her to make friends easily, and she is always willing to help other students. Bell is dependable, always comes to school ready to learn, and shares a smile to have a positive start to her day.[130.56][130.56](Applause).
And I would like to congratulate Eli Espinoza. Thank you for participating in our board meeting for the flag ceremony. We really appreciate it. And here's an award for you. I'd like to shake your hand, Mr. Eli. Congratulations.[158.44][158.44](Applause). And we have Bell over here. We'd like to thank you for participating in our flag ceremony on behalf of the Board of Education, so we congratulate you. Thank you so much, Ms. Bell.[170.45][170.45](Applause).
Can you get them introduced? Yeah, I don't know. Okay. Item 180.16. Oh, before we move on with that, have you brought somebody special with us, with you this evening?
No, they drove here by themselves.
Did you drive them?[227.81][227.81](Laughter).
Maybe not. Mrs. Curry is here, though.
Hi, Mrs. Curry.
This is Mrs. Curry.
Hi, Mrs. Espinoza.
Hi.
Thank you very much, all of you, for coming. It's always good to get off to a good start, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by our children is always a highlight of the evening. Thank you very much.[253.62][253.62](Applause). Okay, moving on to item 180.16. Roll call attendance, Mrs. Muddell.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mrs. Madison is excused. I'm here. And Mr. Buckaloo?
I am here.
Seven, I'm sorry, six people.
Six. Okay, that brings us to item 181.16, recognitions, presentations. Dr. Harmel.
Yes, I would like to first introduce Principal David Ingham from John Glenn High School, and he's going to share a special recognition with us from one of his students.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Harmel. It's my pleasure again tonight to present and introduce to you one of John Glenn's finest, Brandon Allen, has done some special things, not only for himself, but for our school and for our district recently. He's just recently came back from a trip to New York where he participated in the National Youth TED Talk exposure, and got a lot of recognition, not only for himself, but our school and our school district. And I understand, based on that performance, he's got some more offers coming, so I think he'll be doing some more speaking for that organization. So, tonight, to introduce him, I brought two ladies here. Come on up. Melissa Calabrese from our Bright Futures program from Eastern Michigan, and Kristin Mathis, who is an English teacher at John Glenn, but also the TED Talk club sponsor under Bright Futures. And this program and these two ladies is where Brandon got his start, and did some preliminary work for us in the club and in the school, and it blossomed until he got that recognition. Now he's been invited all over the United States to speak. So, I'm going to introduce these two ladies who would like to introduce Brandon tonight. I'm just going to leave it at that, but before I leave the mic and turn it over to them, I want to introduce a couple of other folks. Lynn Malinoff, Dr. Lynn Malinoff's in the audience tonight, longtime sponsor and friend of Wayne Westland, Eastern Michigan, Bright Futures, YMP, on and on and on, so welcome back, Lynn. And our school psychologist, Mr. Louis Shubelski. Louis has also been a supporter of Brandon's for a long time, and it was nice that Bright Futures provided Louis a grant so that Mr. P could accompany Brandon when he went to his trip in New York. So, that was a special bond for them also. So, with that, ladies, take it away.
It's that soul.
It's those goals.
It's that hello, Brandon, there's an internship waiting for you in New York.
And that hello, Brandon, can you give that same talk again in San Diego?
Brandon's TED Ed accomplishments have been extraordinary. TED stands for Technology, Entertainment, and Design.
A TED Ed club is all about stimulating and celebrating the ideas of students from around the world. Over 80 invitations were distributed to John Glenn students during the first year Bright Futures offered this club at the school.
Out of the 80 students, about 25 students showed up the first day, and by the end of the semester, only six delivered a TED-style talk. It certainly takes a lot of grit and perseverance to research a topic and deliver a presentation in front of an audience.
Out of tens of thousands of submissions from around the world, Brandon Allen was one of only four students to be selected to present at the TED Youth Conference in New York last month. His recent performance was broadcast worldwide and interpreted in Arabic and Spanish.
While we would like to take credit for Brandon's amazing advancements with TED Ed, we must take a backseat for this. In fact, Brandon scared us a couple of times when we hadn't witnessed the progress for his talks in a while.
Of course, the reason he hadn't been preparing in person with us was because he was so busy doing other things, like being the Michigan DECA Vice President of Leadership, applying for colleges and scholarships, and going above and beyond in all that he attempts. We can go on and on.
Like being Homecoming King.
As well as a fifth-grade camp counselor.
But as you can and will see, Brandon still pulled it off. So much the first time, we may have suspected him for plagiarism.
We've witnessed Brandon grow from a sophisticated sophomore to a sensational senior. We've seen him answer many doors of opportunity.
We've heard him say, "I know, I'll be there," and we've been so proud of him along the way. Please put your hands together for the future of our world, Brandon Allen.[580.16][580.16](Applause).
Thank you so much, Mrs. Mathis and Mrs. Calabrese. When I had the opportunity to go to New York and to give a speech, they told me to pick something that I was passionate about. And I didn't know what I wanted to speak about, it took me a minute, and anybody who knows me knows that I'm somewhat of a procrastinator. But I finally figured it out, and I said, "Well, I want to talk about like the way the world was in previous years, but I wanted to kind of throw in like a 1980s and 1990s pop culture reference." And people tell me, "Well, you weren't born during that time, so how can you speak about it?" Well, my mom and dad are a bit older, and my brother and my sister have had life experiences, and I'm able to live vicariously through them. So, um, so kind of like the whole, the Fresh Prince of Bel-Air theme, like the television shows, the, all the, like the music, I mean, I grew up around it, so I was able to talk about it and relate to it. So, to be here and to be able to share the moments and the progress I've been able to make with not only TED, but the people at Westland John Glenn High School and in the Wayne Westland Community School District, I'm so happy to have had that relationship. And I have to accredit a lot of it to my family, my Aunt Crystal is here, my mom, my dad, my Aunt Michelle, my Uncle Ed, and my entire family has been so much help, so I'm so thankful. And before, when I told someone that I was coming to do this, they said, "Wow, Brandon, you're so lucky to be able to do it." And I said, "I'm not lucky, I'm blessed." So, um, so thank you so much for allowing me to come here and giving me recognition. I really, really do appreciate it, so thank you.[694.86][694.86](Applause).
Thank you very much, Brandon. We have a certificate for you from Dr. Weaver.
You're looking good.[711.61][711.61](Laughter). I'm going to see you on world news tonight, right? You're going to be the anchor?
Oh, yeah, one day.
Okay. And you've already told us who is with you tonight. Anything else you want to say about them?
Um, I want to, I'll start with Mr. Shubelski since he's over there. He went with me to New York, and he helped me the entire way along with Mrs. Calabrese and Mrs. Mathis, and helped me kind of form my speech and make it as best, as best as it could be. And even when, you know, I was still trying to formulate a topic and it wasn't as good, or I got some feedback or some critiques that I didn't agree with, he was there to help me and kind of push me and help me through it, so I appreciate you for that. And my mom, my dad, my Aunt Michelle, my Aunt Crystal, my Uncle Ed, all my aunts and uncles and family at home, they always called me, texted me, tell me how proud they are with me, and I love them for that, and it helps me and it keeps me going and it keeps me pushed, and I'm so grateful to have family like that behind me.
Right. Now, have your mom and dad ever played any spinners?
Record players all the time.
Okay. All right. If you don't know me by now, there you go. Good one. Well, Brandon, congratulations on your accomplishments, being invited to New York and now around the country for the TED Youth Conference, which was streamed worldwide. We'd like to give you this certificate, and thank you for being with us tonight.[801.11][801.11](Applause).
Thank you, Brandon. Is there anyone who has a comment or would like to say anything at this point? Yes, ma'am.
I just, Brandon, I just, I'm so proud and elated to hear all the accomplishments, and students like you is what makes what we do up here worthwhile, and I just want to say thank you, because sometimes it can be a little rough, but when we see that outcome, it makes it all better. So, thank you.
I'd like to thank mom, dad, aunts, uncles, mentors, teachers. You've brought up a great student, somebody who will go forward and be successful in society, and somebody that we can look back at and say, "They went to our school district. He graduated from John Glenn." Make us proud going forward. I know you have it within you. You have the potential to be great. Show us what you can do. Good luck.
And I'd also like to congratulate you, Brandon. I'm really impressed with you. Your family has done an excellent job, and Bright Futures is an awesome program. You guys are doing a fabulous job with our children.
We sometimes have to live vicariously, and...
Fresh Prince of Bel-Air.[919.11][919.11](Laughter).
Want to thank you for making us look good. Not that we deserve any of the credit, but we'll take it just the same. You're a credit to your school, you're a credit to the school district, and we couldn't be prouder than having you as a member of our family. Thank you very much, Brandon.
Mr. President, I just echo all the comments you've put to the Board members. I'm repeating them. We appreciate you, Brandon.
Okay, thank you very much. And Brandon, I know that you are so involved in many things, so we're going to do one more short presentation, and if you want to kind of slide out at any quiet moment, you and your family are welcome to do that. We're going to do a brief conversation with, led by our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. John Albrecht, related to program evaluation.
Thank you, Dr. Harmel, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education. A primary component of strategic planning is to determine a starting point, and a key part of determining that is to evaluate programs and initiatives already, that we're already doing to determine their effectiveness. Wayne Westland Community Schools has adopted many initiatives, tools, and programs, or we've redesigned programs in efforts to better service our students and support our teaching and learning. They should be evaluated for their effectiveness, and then decisions could be made as part of the planning process to determine what should be continued, and if necessary, those things that should not be continued. As the Educational Services Team worked to identify those initiatives and programs, we came to the realization that their numbers were extensive. Evaluating all of them in a timely manner that could inform the strategic planning process seemed daunting. Some, TICOM redesign, online registration and enrollment, just to name a couple, have built-in evaluation measurements and timeframes that can be done internally. Others require significant time and energy to work through the evaluation process. To some people, most of these do not have an obvious impact on our general fund, as they could have been chosen or implemented using Title I or Title II, or maybe Michigan 31A at-risk funds. However, there is always a time and energy component of any initiative that impacts the work of teachers, support staff, building principals, and district leadership. There is value in that time and energy that, if made available, could increase our abilities to impact student outcomes. It should be noted that it's very difficult to measure the financial value, or maybe even the academic return on that value. Our Educational Services Team realized that there simply isn't enough time or staff to evaluate these initiatives internally, so as to inform the strategic planning process. In addition, we realized that we are utilizing programs and initiatives that have not yet been measured for their effectiveness. As a result, the Educational Services Team recommended to the Superintendent's Cabinet that we seek outside support for this purpose. There would be a cost for a contracted service company with a history of excellence, and it was incumbent on the Educational Services Team to justify the expenses seeking source of spending. It was also important that the potential for evaluation would help us as a district to narrow our focus, concentrating on providing the very best environment for teaching and learning. We have chosen Hanover Research for their expertise in evaluating school district programs and initiatives. The partnership with them would be an annual partnership. The cost this year for a contracted service would be $38,500. Their procedure is to work with our district personnel, and that's teachers, administrators, support staff, and leadership, to consider an initiative's intent, collect data, and then provide feedback. One result could be that the expected outcomes are not what we had hoped, but possible gaps in our implementation process may be found, and being motivated to close them would result in an effective program that would be continued. Another result might be that the situation that existed at the time we adopted a particular initiative has changed so that the initiative does not meet the needs or is impractical based on some other factor, for instance, student enrollment. Hanover will dedicate their staff to work with us to evaluate one program at a time, and then move on to the next, based on a list of priorities that our district develops. It is expected that working together, we will be able to complete four to six program evaluations this year. Any questions?
As I understand it, you're not coming to us for permission, you're simply advising us of a decision that's been made?
That is correct. The Superintendent's Cabinet has recommended we move forward.
I would like to just offer my two cents worth, which is, if we're going to get where we need to be, we need to know which road we ought to be on, and if we're on the wrong road, we need to get off that road as quickly as we can. With our fiscal situation being as it is, we can't afford to duplicate initiatives. We can't afford to waste resources on initiatives that aren't the most efficient. So, I applaud what you're attempting to do, and I hope that it's as successful as you believe it will be.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. When will the Hanover Group's analysis be done, be completed?
As I said, they actually do one evaluation at a time. They begin it, they finish it, they provide us with the feedback, so we could get four to six done before the end of June.
And that would be put in the Board's pan when they're completed?
Yes.
Okay. And they have, I'm sure, strong connections with Lansing and our lawmakers, so that they can stay on top of what changes we need to make, and then put the law in there, too?
Well, their expertise is in helping us determine the effectiveness, and so we, why did you adopt a program? What did you expect the outcomes to be? And then they'll help us determine whether or not we made the right choice, or whether or not the program is actually effective.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Albrecht.
I just have one quick question. With it being a $38,500 annually, how many years will we use this company?
We make that choice annually.
Okay, okay.
I want to thank Dr. Harmel and Mr. Albrecht for taking time out of your meeting to answer my questions and concerns that I had about doing this type of evaluation at this time. And they were able, for the rest of you, they were able to answer my questions, and looking forward to the ripple effect that this will have for our districts, our employees, our students, everybody. So, again, I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to item 182.16, citizen comments, agenda items only.
I am not seeing anybody.
And I see no comments, which takes us to 183.16, cassette agenda, a motion?
We'll think so.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mrs. Walker, and a second from Dr. Weaver. Discussion? Seeing none? Do we have a vote, Mrs. Muddell?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison is excused. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mr. Buckaloo?
I vote yes as well. That gives us a vote of 6-0. And it also takes us to item 184.16, review and approval, Board Policy Sections 2000 and 6000. Dr. Harmel, Mr. Sutton?
Thank you. We are prepared to share with you two sections tonight in the format we've shared with you before. You have in your agenda pages 19 and 21, the matrices that Mr. Sutton put together that shows the policies and the suggested changes, and then you should also have at your table the draft version number nine of the Luskin-Albertson policies, which would be the very language. And on the screen, I will be sharing the current versions of the policies as we review them. So, from here, I'm going to hand it over to Kevin Sutton from Luskin-Albertson, and he'll take us through our normal process.
Thank you, Dr. Harmel. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education. Happy holidays and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here as always. I'm guessing that at this point, this is my, I think, third trip to the Board to discuss policies, and that idea of where are we in the big picture may be rattling around in someone's head, so very quickly, before we dive into the 2000 and 6000 series, I wanted to provide the Board with an overview of where we stand with this process. We started having discussions about the policy review last November, right before Thanksgiving, and really began in earnest doing our analysis and going through the policies line by line in January. I'm happy to report that as we approach the new year, we have, with administration, gotten through all nine sections of the policies. So far, there have been four sections that have been brought to the Board for review and approval. The 3000, 4000, 7000, and 8000 series have all been brought before the Board and adopted. This evening, we'll be talking about two more series, the 2000 and 6000 series, which are shorter in nature and somewhat organizational. That leaves three series left, 1000, 5000, and 9000. I've had the pleasure of working through administration with, on those policy sections. We're meeting with the Policy Committee soon to discuss those three remaining sessions, sections, excuse me. And then we'll have a board meeting that I know we're trying to determine the date of, to review those three final sections. I want the Board to know that when we finish this process, and we've been working off these various drafts, version one, version two, we're up to version nine now, when we get through to the final three sections and we adopt everything, we will be applying numbers to the policies. I know that's a question that has come up in some of the committee meetings, as to whether or not we're going to be able to label them in terms of 1000 series, 2000 series, so on and so forth, and we will do that. We will do that at the end. So, I just wanted the Board to be aware of that, because several of you have asked if that's a possibility, and that was the plan, and that's how we're going to finish it up at the end. So, with that, I will dive into the 2000 series, unless there are any questions about where we stand in the big picture. I will do as we've done in the past, which is work down the matrix from left to right, each column, identifying which policy we're talking about, the recommended action on each, and then there's a reference to the policy book, which will let you know what we're talking about in terms of where we think it is now in the new policies. And I think last time, we went with me continuing to go until somebody raised their hand and told me they had a question, and if there are no objections, I will move through the 2000 series accordingly. We start with Policy 2020, which deals with administrative organization. And the recommendation here is to move the policy to administrative guidelines. Generally, if we look at page one of the policy booklet, there is an introduction to the policies in general, a general outline of the responsibilities of the Board of Education, general responsibilities of the Superintendent of Schools. And what we're going to see in the 2000 series, which is the General School Administration series, many of these policies that we have in our current book are replaced by this very short succinct summary of the duties on page one.
There's a typo in the very first sentence. It needs to say Wayne Westland Community School District, not Schools District.
Thank you. I'll make that correction. Any questions on Policy 2020 and moving to administrative regulation? We'll move into Policy 2100, and again, Dr. Harmel will be scrolling down so the public can see and the Board can see. This is the policy in the current manual on the Superintendent. This is replaced by the LNA policies on page one, the summary regarding the responsibilities of the Superintendent.
Okay. So, you get it in two different captions? Okay.
Policy 2110, discussing the Superintendent's qualifications. The recommendation here is to keep that language, but to move it to administrative guidelines, so those qualifications will be enumerated within administrative guidelines. Similar recommendation for Policy 2120 pertaining to the Superintendent's duties. There is a general description on page one regarding the job functions of the Superintendent, but any additional responsibilities that are laid out in 2120 will be moved to administrative guidelines. Policy 2130 deals with Superintendent succession, and this was language that we're not, was not in the LA policy book when we started discussing it, and there was a recommendation by the Policy Committee to add language from Policy 2130 regarding Superintendent succession... And this was language that were not, was not in the LA policy book when we started discussing it, and there was a recommendation by the Policy Committee to add language from policy 2130 regarding superintendent succession to the policies. And so, that has been done. On page one, language has been added to that effect regarding superintendent succession.
I have a question about this. Where am I finding superintendent succession on page one?
It's actually in the Board of Education section. It's very difficult. We're now using gray and brown, because we've used all the bright colors. So, we're on the third line down.
Where it's lighter?
The Board shall establish and maintain a plan of succession to ensure the efficient operation of the school district in the event, excuse me, of an unexpected emergency. So, that is a typo on the matrix. I apologize. It says superintendent of schools, it should be listed under the Board of Education on the matrix, but it is in there in the gray language under Board of Education. 2140, dealing with appointment. Again, the recommendation here is to move the language from that policy to administrative guidelines, so it stays intact, but would be moved to administrative guidelines and out of policy. Policy 2150 deals with superintendent compensation and benefits. Again, a good thing to have, but a recommendation to move to administrative guidelines, so it can be addressed therein. Policy 2170 deals with superintendent professional development opportunities. Another recommendation to move to administrative guidelines, so those opportunities for professional development can be contained within administrative guidelines. Policy 2250 and 2450 deal with evaluations. 2250 deals with superintendent's evaluation. 2450 deals with administrative evaluation. And the recommendation here is to strike both policies as unnecessary, inasmuch as those topics are addressed under the law. We know the legislature has gone to great lengths to give us all of these evaluation models and language, so the recommendation is to strike those, because those will happen on an annual basis, consistent with state law. Policy 2550 deals with handbooks and other publications, generally saying that policies and procedures are to be known by all staff members and those working in the district. Here, the language contained on page one generally replaces the language of policy We move to the second page of the matrix, and policy 2590, which relates to professional development opportunities, generally replaced by the LNA policies on page six, where we talk about curriculum, learning, and achievement. And therein, we talk about providing resources to staff, so they can be aware of the latest developments in education, taking advantage of those things to make them as versed as possible in the latest developments. Policy 2700 deals with policy implementation, and 2700 is not a long policy, but we've parsed through the committee discussion, the two sections of policy, or, excuse me, policy 2700, moving the first paragraph, which reads, "The administrative staff shall carry out and enforce all policies duly adopted by the Board and all regulations of state authorities," moving that to administrative guidelines. So, that's very clear, while striking the second paragraph of the policy implementation policy as unnecessary. Any questions at all on 2700? Moving then to policy 2750, which addresses administrative rules. There is a recommendation here to strike, not because there's anything inherently wrong with 2750, but as we got to 2750, having gone through so many other policies, we felt it to be very duplicative of a lot of the policies that we had covered in terms of community involvement, student involvement, and so on and so forth, and felt that it was superfluous, really, vis-à-vis all of the other policies that are within the booklet. So, there's a recommendation to strike there. We then have policy 2800, which deals with records, and policy 2850, which deals with social security number confidentiality. Again, two important topics that we felt were most appropriate as general administrative guidelines, supporting the policies, as opposed to standalone policies themselves. And that is the 2000 series.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the revised Board Policy Series 2000?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Walker, and second by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Madell? Can we have a vote, please?
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mr. Buckaloo?
I also vote yes.
Six zero.
It is a six zero vote.
Thank you. We'll move next to the 6000 series, and this series is only five policies long, but deals with the important topic of negotiations. This series and the proposed revisions were discussed with the Finance Committee prior to coming to the Board this evening. We start with policy 6001, dealing with goals and objectives. We felt it appropriate to move this to administrative guidelines, in terms of having the content of that policy there, within the guidelines, but as a policy, we felt that, under the duties and responsibilities of the Board on page two, the obligation to negotiate wages and hours, et cetera, was encompassed therein. Policy 6100 deals with Board negotiating agents. We have a recommendation to strike here as unnecessary. There is language in the current 6100, which talks about negotiating with agents recognized under the PARA, the Public Employment Relations Act. We felt that it was unnecessary to have a policy specific in terms of identifying agents. That's certainly something that is permitted under the PARA. Therefore, we felt that a policy specifically addressing that was not necessary. 6150 deals with the superintendent's role in negotiations, and we had extensive discussion on 6150, and ultimately, there was a recommendation to add some language from 6150 about the superintendent's role to the LA policies. And you will see towards the bottom of page one, that section on superintendent of schools, it was intended to be brown, it may look tan or some color like that. We've added a sentence, "For purposes of labor negotiations, the superintendent may serve as the chief negotiator for the Board at the discretion of the Board. If the superintendent is not serving as the chief negotiator, he or she may serve as a negotiating team member, or as a consultant to the negotiating team." That's generally language that is currently in 6150, though we made it general neutral, the old policies were not. So, we've added that language to page one. 6250, we have, is on the negotiator's stipend, which I suppose if you're the negotiator is a good thing, but given the current financial circumstances, there was a recommendation to strike the negotiator's stipend. To the extent that the superintendent is serving as a consultant or the chief negotiator for the district, her activities, his or her activities as a negotiator would be encompassed within their salary and part of their duties, the superintendent and a separate stipend would not be appropriate. So, there is a recommendation to strike that section. Lastly, policy 6400 deals with contract ratification, deals essentially with the process for the ratification coming before the Board, and we've recommended to move that to administrative guidelines. Certainly, the Board will still vote on all contracts, just the process for how it comes to the Board would be addressed in administrative guidelines. And that is the 6000 series.
Very good. Thank you. Need a motion to approve Board Policy Revisions for the 6000 series?
Motion to accept.
Dr. Weaver, is the motion?
Support.
And Ms. Hines is the second. Seeing none? Mr. Weaver, can we have a vote, please?
That would be Mrs. Madell.
It's Mrs. Madell.
Let's not start any rumors around the district, please. My husband's in the audience.
Transgender.
In fact, he's leaving. Boy, am I in trouble. Thank you, Tom. Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
I'm not sure.
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mr. Buckaloo?
I vote yes.
A six zero vote.
Six zero. We all start looking alike after a while, don't we? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, folks. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
That takes us to 184.16, review and approval, business service and finance items. Mr. Larson, Shider?
Thank you, President Buckaloo. The first item that we have tonight is the sinking fund construction closeout bid packet number two. Bid packet number two was for the Wildwood mechanical upgrade, which was budgeted at $2,500,000 for the installation of a geothermal system. First, I want to briefly explain what a geothermal system is. It's a system that utilizes ground temperatures as a base for heating and cooling. Ground temperatures are constant at about approximately 55 degrees. The system uses water flow through pipes buried throughout the ground to operate the heating and cooling, which will anticipate will, installation of geothermal system will save utilities for Wildwood going forward. As part of the project, we had to install a geothermal field, which involved digging up the playground at Wildwood, installing pipes throughout, so the water can flow through, flow through the system, in order to take the 55-degree temperature, make the water of the ground temperature. It's not only the geothermal system that was installed. We also installed motion sensor lighting throughout the hallways, classrooms. The rooms were completely redone with new paint, ceilings, heating and cooling cassettes. The main entrance skylights with light sensors, what it does is, as the natural light comes through, the lights dim, in order to compensate for less light needed. And so, it's not just the system, it's actually more involved, you know, the ceilings, the classrooms, and so forth. Total actual project costs were $2,423,5166, resulting in a positive budget variance of
Anyone have a comment?
I'd like to say, thank you for doing such a good job for keeping us under budget.
No, thank you. I'll pass that along.
No.
We don't need a motion?
Nope.
No, that was just review. We stayed that in Finance Committee, we would bring bid packets to the Board to review them as they're completed.
Anyone else have a comment? Mr. Larson, Shider, I believe this is the second time this year you've come to us with a bid package under budget?
Yes.
And $79, almost $80,000, 15% savings, 15% under budget. And again, I'm most appreciative of the hard work that you do in securing for us the best price possible. Once again, we are in difficult fiscal times.
Thank you. That would be, pass that along to Building and Grounds, Tony Spiezak and his group.
Thank you very much. And you have another item for us?
Yes, again, President Buckaloo. The next item is for the purchase of Chromebooks and mobile computing carts. This is for 213 Dell Latitude Chromebook laptop computers and eight mobile computing carts. The one thing that I'd point out on your memo is the four carts and 30. It's actually four carts and 93 Chromebooks that would be deployed at Marshall Upper Elementary, that's total of about $26,000. And the four carts and 120 Chromebooks deployed at Stevenson Middle School, that's about $34,000. This is from both schools, Title I budget for 15, 16 school year.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Before.
Motion by Mrs. Walker, and second by Mr. Griffin. I would just point out again that this is Title I funding that we're using?
Yes, it is Title I.
And so, this is not going to have a negative impact on our total budget?
No.
Seeing no other comments? Mrs. Madell, a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mr. Buckaloo?
I also vote yes.
Six zero.
We have a six zero vote on that. Thank you very much, Mr. Larson, Shider.
Thank you.
Item 186.16, student reinstatement resolution. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. When a student has been expelled from our school district and has appealed for reinstatement, a process must take place. A committee is formed to consider that application for reinstatement, and the committee must consist of two members of the Board of Education, a principal, a teacher, and a district parent. The committee then considers the application and supporting documentation, and makes a recommendation of the full Board of Education for consideration. All those requirements have been met for student B1. What we'll need tonight is three things: a motion to reinstate, a resolution read into the record, and a vote by the Board of Education.
We have a motion to reinstate, please?
I move that we reinstate student B1.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Walker, support by Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Madell, you have the resolution?
Whereas the Board of Education for the Wayne Westland Community Schools convened on December 7, 2015 pursuant to Michigan case law 380.1311, Section F, I'm sorry, Section 5, subsection F, to consider the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of expelled student B1, and to consider the report and recommendation of the reinstatement committee previously appointed by the Board of Education pursuant to Michigan case law 380.1211, Section 5, subsection D. Whereas, the Board of Education is persuaded that student B1 should be reinstated to the Wayne Westland Community Schools, subject to the following terms and conditions: One, placement at Wayne Memorial High School; Two, the student will conduct himself/herself at all times in strict conformity with the district's student code of conduct; Three, the student will maintain academic progress towards a diploma; Four, the parent and the student understand and agree that if the district's sole and exclusive discretion, the student violates the, excuse me, the student code of conduct in any way, the district will immediately suspend the student and initiate due process procedures to permanently expel the student from the district. Therefore, it is resolved that the reinstatement committee's report and recommendation is hereby adopted by the Board of Education, and that for the reasons stated herein, the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of student B1 be hereby granted, subject to strict compliance with the terms and conditions set forth above. Is further resolved that a copy of the resolution will be provided to the student and parent. It has been moved by Mrs. Walker and supported by Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mr. Buckaloo?
I also vote yes.
With Mrs. Madison being excused, the motion passes.
And we have a six zero vote, and the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 187.16, Board Officer Transition Process. Mrs. Madell, will you poll the members, please?
I am not going to go in any particular order here, I'll just select one of the lines here.
Mr. President, before we do that, I have a question, and I hope you can answer it for me. Now, my question is, let's assume that, I'm not one of those who say I want to be a member, but let's assume that I say I don't want to be a member or an officer for next year, but in case somebody were to nominate somebody, not just me, but anybody else, does the Board bylaws, I read them, does that preclude somebody from being elected to something on the the election on January the eleventh?
I don't believe it.
As a clarification, what's your opinion?
If you state today that you do not wish to hold an officer position, and in the time between now and the January meeting, if you change your mind, that is a viable thing for you to do. And vice versa, if you stand here today and say, you know, I don't want anything, can you change your mind? The opposite of you.
I appreciate the clarification before the night is over. I thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
I assume, but I want to make sure that I was in concern with the secretary and the president, vice president. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so, let's begin with Mrs. Madison.
Mrs. Madison has indicated her desire to be a trustee next year.
Mrs. Hines?
I desire to be a trustee, I am still learning. Lots to learn.
I agree. Dr. Weaver?
President, Vice President or Secretary.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker?
I'm okay with any of the positions.
Mr. Griffin?
I, I don't desire any position, but I, you know, if it's necessary, if somebody doesn't want it, I'd be okay, so that's kind of a, come here to take off of Mrs. Walker.
Will be anything but superintendent.
Because you'd have to give up your board seat.
Well, I guess that's a no right now.
And that brings it to me, I will serve in any capacity that my fellow board trustees wish to put me in, except for president and secretary. I have held those positions enough. That leaves Mr. Buckaloo.
Well, like each of you, I'm willing to serve as needed, but it's my desire next year to serve as a trustee.
And that is all of us.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. But you're still on deck, one eight eight point one six, Head Start Monthly Report, this is something new, isn't it?
Yes, as, as the federal laws change and as the county regulations change to comply with the federal regulations, it has that trickle-down effect to even us, and we are being supplied on a monthly basis with enrollment, enrollment reports, attendance reports, besides the financial reports that we also receive. You will also notice in the packet that you received, that was delivered to your house last week, that it also includes what meals, snacks are provided free of charge to those students from the federal government through the Head Start program. So if there are any questions about anything, there is usually a name that will be, appear at the bottom of that report as the person who has filed it, please feel free to give that person a call. Some of your questions I can answer, but not a whole lot in detail when it comes to financial, that is something that you will need to deal with, the person whose name's at the bottom of the report. So I think that's, I did mention the financial report and that's required by law, so I think I've got it covered.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report, item one eight nine point one six, Dr. Harmala?
Thank you, President Buckaloo. This evening, I'd like to provide a brief update on pending legislation as well as our strategic planning process. Our legislators will continue to work through the end of next week before they take a break for the holidays. Currently, House Bill 4059, which is the critical shortage bill, is still working its way through the Senate, but we do anticipate it will be approved and signed and we're hoping prior to the holiday break. This is an important bill as it will increase availability of high-qualified substitutes and teachers for positions that are harder to fill, such as those that might require unique or many certifications. The bills essentially allow retired teachers to return to the classroom and that will be very helpful to Wayne Westland Community Schools. House Bill 4298 is the energy choice bill. It is still also progressing through the legislative process. We have provided feedback on this bill on generally a weekly basis and our concerns have been heard and substitutions and amendments related to some of the voicing we've done are being considered currently. We're hopeful that if this legislation does pass, we will continue to see the savings on our electricity, thereby allowing us to focus more of our resources into teaching and learning. And the current electric choice program that we belong to allows us to save approximately $400,000 per year, or the equivalent of approximately eight teachers in the classroom that continue, we continue to be able to fund those positions. So we're thankful to our legislators for sharing our concerns and hope to see positive outcomes when and if that bill moves forward. Our strategic planning process is underway. We released information about that process in a variety of ways last week. We sent releases to our various news media, provided email blasts through our school systems and have a link on our district website, which you can see on our screen right now. Michigan Leadership Institute will begin facilitation of stakeholder meetings this week. We are interested in hearing from our students, parents, personnel and all community members. We want you to dream big and envision what could be and will be in the future of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. We want you to stretch your thinking and share your dreams. You can go to our website, click on the strategic planning link and select a meeting date that suits your schedule. If you're unable to attend a meeting, please share ideas through the online link provided on the homepage. This week, we will host two student meetings. Invitations have gone out to our groups of students at two of our high schools. We will also host our first parent meeting, and the parent meeting is open to any parent who resides within the Wayne Westland Community School District. You're welcome if your children have not yet reached school age. You're welcome to come if you have school-aged children or children who have graduated and are no longer in school. You're welcome to attend if your children currently attend a school other than Wayne Westland Community Schools, or if you attend one of our schools. In other words, everybody is welcome. The first parent meeting will be held Wednesday evening, December ninth. It starts at 6:30 PM. It'll be held at Walker Winter Elementary. And if this meeting date and time does not work for you, we will have 12 other meetings throughout the month of January. And again, please click on the strategic planning link on our website and attend a meeting. Short amount of time will give us a lot of information in terms of planning for our future. Finally, I'd like to wish all of you as board members, our staff, our students, our parents and the broader community, a safe and joyful holiday season. We're looking forward to continuing our important work with all of you in the new year. So thank you, President Buckaloo.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Madell?
Can I ask you a question about this?
Sure.
On the schedule, when it says all parents and that, can any of us also attend?
Yes, and at the, and an added feature, any parent can attend. We have staff who are parents in our community, but also personnel, so they can attend whatever meeting they think fits their need in terms of date and time. The process is the same regardless of who the stakeholders are. And then at the policy committee meeting on the fourteenth, we'll be discussing, does the board want to hold a study session for itself and go through the same process with MLI, or would you rather just attend the meetings that exist as you see fit in January?
Okay.
Anyone else have a question for the superintendent? Okay, item one nine zero point one six, citizen comments, non-agenda items.
You did it on purpose, darling.
Just for doing it, you need to get up and say something.
Do we have a sergeant-at-arms?
Yes, we do.
I believe we have no.
I'm not seeing anybody else making the move.
I believe we have no comments this evening. Item one nine one point one six, review and recommendations, Board of Education. Mr. Griffin?
Hi, I'd like to wish the community a safe holiday and also board members administration a safe and happy holiday, and that's good enough for tonight, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Walker?
I, too, just want to say happy holidays to my fellow board members and to all the community, have a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you. And Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Bella and Eli for leading us in the pledge tonight, and also say to our community and those that are here in the building to have a very enjoyable time off, as well as a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hines?
I just have something that's really been on my heart, is the Leader in Me program. I was able to go to David Hicks and Switzer and seeing those children taking responsibility. I was impressed with the attendance, knowing at a young age it's important to be there, looking at how they track their grades, and they were so happy to show me their banners. It was something that really just, I mean, it was special because when we went to those academic award letters, seeing all those students and the parents so excited to watch their kids achieve like high standards, this is what this district is all about. So I mean, I applaud all you guys, teachers, staff, everybody, and I love my bus drivers, I see the buses. This school district is doing a phenomenal job, and I'd like to thank all the staff and students for really putting their best efforts forward, because I can see future valedictorians, I can see more scholarship money coming into our district. So I'd like to really thank you guys for that, so I just had to really say that. And another thing I'd like to thank, you know, all the family and friends, I have a happy, safe holiday and just be really safe and just enjoy yourself.
Thank you. Mrs. Madell?
First of all, I'd like to tell you that it was, it was great attending all the academic awards with, with all of you and seeing the brightest and the best coming across the stage for both high schools, and knowing that I will get a chance to see them at graduation and how proud their parents are of them now and will be when that time comes. Also going to National Honor Society inductions and seeing a different group of students being inducted and knowing that they are our future leaders of our school district, whether they come up with something creative at career tech, or whether it's an art project or a contest that they've entered, or some kind of musical performance, the, we have such potential in our students here in our school district, and you'll get a chance to see that at all of our holiday concerts that are coming up. Nice segue, Mike. I already got a chance to go to John Glenn's choir concert and I know that Wayne High is coming up, and so are the instrumental concerts also, which will include some of our junior high, junior high, whoa, where'd that come from? Our middle school students also being part of those concerts, so please, come join us, it's free. I want to congratulate our bus drivers, transportation department for Stuff the Bus. They expanded it this year for two days, two different locations, and it was highly successful. I want to congratulate them on all their efforts. This is time out of their family life, out of their home schedules, to do an activity like this, and it's our students that will reap the benefits from it. And I also want to wish all of you a very good holiday and our students to come back safely to us in one piece, please. Too often careless decisions are made and things happen, and I don't want to see any of our students make poor choices or be injured during this holiday time, so come back to us in one piece, ready to go. So with that said, have a very good holiday.
Thank you. Well, the Thanksgiving recess kind of marks the beginning of the end of the first semester. It seems like everything moves very, very quickly from that point forward, and we're right in the middle of that, of that process right now. This is the final meeting before the holiday break, when we convene again, it'll be January, it'll be a new year, and, and our work will still be the same, we'll continue that, but it'll be a second semester, or at least will, the second semester will be right around the corner. I'd like to thank Bell and Eli, as Dr. Weaver did, for helping us out, and I'd like to thank Dr. Weaver for covering for me at the Wayne High Academic Awards. I appreciate that very much. Brandon Allen is just fantastic. He does for our district the kinds of things that I think all of us wish we could do. He makes us shine. If we have more students like Brandon Allen, we're going to be something special. We're something special already, but we can certainly bask in his glow, and I'm very, very pleased that he's a part of our school district. This is December seventh. Seventy-four years ago, the attack on Pearl Harbor occurred. Not many of us were alive at that time, but it's something that we should remember. Over 2,000 Americans lost their lives that day, another 1,100 were wounded. Again, it's just history, but it's something that we should remember. History is very, very important. So today we celebrate, if that's the correct word, the Japanese attack on Pearl Harbor, December seventh. This, this week, there's going to be a Veterans Day breakfast at Franklin, in fact, it's tomorrow morning, and later this week on Friday is the JROTC Ball, and it's perhaps fitting that it should occur in the same week as December seventh. This is the end of the year, and I want to offer special thanks to Dr. Harmala, to our administration, and especially to my fellow board members for making this a truly enjoyable year to serve as your president. I've had nothing but fine experiences, and I can't thank you folks enough for making it just that, a wonderful experience. And with that, take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.